It's my pleasure to call to order the State Board of Education meeting for December. Let's see, I think we have everyone here. Good morning and welcome. This time I'd like to read the mission statement. The mission of the Kansas State Board of Education is to prepare students for lifelong success through rigorous quality academic instruction, career training, and character development according to each student's gifts and talents. Our vision is for Kansas to lead the world in the success of each student. If you would please join with me now in a moment of silence. Thank you. If you would please stand and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Our next action is to approve the agenda for today. We have several adjustments that need to be made to accommodate some schedules. The Attorney General's presentation on citizenship initiative originally scheduled for Wednesday will now be item 11 today, beginning at 1:50. The discussion on the definition of college and career ready will move to Wednesday as item four. I'd also like to add an item 17 for today, legislative update from Dale, which will happen at the end of the day. Are there any other corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, may I have a motion to approve the December 8th agenda as amended? Mr. Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would like to request that please the board to pull item 16C for discussion. That would be approval of licensure waivers, 16C from the consent agenda.
We'll add that to my original modifications to the agenda, 16C by Mr. Roberts. Do I have a motion? Dina Horace moves, seconded by Ken Willard. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please raise your hand. Those opposed, same sign. Thank you very much, 10-0. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of the November State Board of Education meeting? If not, may I have a motion to approve the minutes as presented? Ken Willard moves, seconded by Carolyn Campbell. Thank you. All those in favor of approval of the minutes as presented on the November State Board of Education meeting, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes 10-0. At this time, our agenda item is a report from Commissioner Watson, who will update us on the activities since the last meeting, including the CCSSO Annual Policy Forum that was in November, and on our vision. Welcome.
Thank you. I've got a little cold, so hanging up's a good thing.
Don't feel alone.
Yeah, everyone's fighting a little something. And we're waiting. No one's tweeting me right now that the Senate has passed ESEA, but we're waiting. Maybe today, maybe tomorrow, but I want to talk to you a little bit about ESEA. I know you've been following it. And then I want to highlight one of the many things going on in Kansas relative to your vision that is really exciting. So, as you know, we waited and waited years and years and years and years for the reauthorization of what commonly is called No Child Left Behind, or the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, ESEA. And it's really, I think, proven to me how old I've become because when I'm out talking to groups, anywhere from, in many cases, half to two-thirds of the faculties of many school districts, only No Life Under No Child Left Behind. And so this really is a difficult thing for them to wrap their head around. Jim and I were talking this morning, many of us remember life before. No Child Left Behind where ESEA was primarily a title program. And if you were involved in title programs, you knew a lot about it, and if you weren't, you didn't know very much. So just kind of take you through what we're planning to do in a fairly short time, and how it will play out, and answer any questions that you have. We have, Brad has authorized in our agency a team of six individuals, so not just one. It's a fairly short law, only 1,000 pages compared to the 15,000 pages or so that No Child Left Behind was. But we're analyzing that so that we have different viewpoints possibly that come to us and talk about that. Brad's putting together a team of over 20 people from across the state that will help advise us on key components of the waiver once we've analyzed it. And then a very important subcommittee will be formed to model and identify those schools that are on improvement. One of the major changes is we're going to move from focus and priority schools, or 15 percent of the schools, to five. And we're going to get a 5 percent. And we're going to get a lot of flexibility given to the State Board of Ed to determine how we arrive at those numbers. You don't just have to look at test scores. So we want a committee that works on that and brings you some recommendations for that. Because as you know, no matter how good we get over the years, there always are going to be a bottom 5 percent. That's just the nature of it. The new law doesn't go into effect until the 17, 18 school year, and so all states will have about an 18-month transition period where we're just frozen in time relative to gearing up for the new law, and that'll be true of every state. So the waivers are gone in essence, but we're going to be living under the current status until we get to the 17, 18 school year. Yes, yes, sure.
When we talk about our last 5 percent, is the committee going to decide whether we keep the process of KLN?
Yes, I think all of those will be.
And that will be looked at by that committee?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Again, the lowest 5 percent as opposed to the 15 percent under the ESEA waiver currently. States still have to assess students in math and English language arts in grades three through eight and once in high school, and at three points, an elementary point, a middle school point, and a high school point in science. So not every year, but at some point in there. So that is still in the law. That was very important to the Democratic side of the aisle, that annual testing was in there. What was given to the State Board and to the states was that you don't necessarily create the lowest five performing schools solely on test scores. You can, but every state can devise that. Gave a lot more authority back to the states. Again, states will determine how we use the results for assessment for accountability, how we provide support to school. Flexibility with local stakeholders to determine how educators should be evaluated and supported. So as you know, under the No Child Left Behind Act, student achievement had to be a component of every teacher leader's evaluation. That is gone from a federal accountability. Doesn't mean it's gone in Kansas. We're going to have to talk about that, have a lot of discussion, because we really just got that fully ramped up this year, but it's not in the federal accountability law anymore that that has to be a part of it. You know, all the consternation over the years about putting that together, but it's not in the current law as going forward.
But one of the things that we've never done is made it like 50 percent or 90 percent of the teacher evaluation. It's been one of three data points that they had to use.
That's correct, yes. We fought and put a percent to it. And interesting proposal, preschool development grants, brand new. There'll be some money for pre-K through the Department of Health and Human Services, but will be jointly mastered by the Department of Education and Health and Human Services. Don't know much about that, except there's going to be some money allocated on some kind of formula for the advancement of pre-K outside of money that's already there for early Head Start, Head Start, and those type of programs. So, questions? I know Sally's been very in tune, Jim's been in Washington recently. A lot of you probably are getting from NASB and other sources daily updates with the ESEA, just like I am. But it really is an exciting time where most of the authority, if you compare it to the previous law, is going to come back to you. I always say, as we talk about the vision, the good news is you control it. The bad news is you control it, right? I mean, if you think about pre-No Child Left Behind, the State Board controlled quality performance accreditation. Schools were a part of that in a large discussion. But we're going to have to come up with, what do we want to have in this next accountability system? What I can tell you is, I believe you're already well on the path with your new vision and the outcomes and the definition that we'll talk about over the next two days in establishing that, and all that will fit under the current reauthorization of ESEA. So I think you're going to get a lot of questions, Dina, as an example of, what are we going to have to do under ESEA? And the answer is going to be, I think, the State Board's developed a vision, we've got some outcomes, we're going, and that will mesh very well into the reauthorization of ESEA. The questions that come out of that are from the people that don't know anything other than the No Child Left Behind, and that states, before No Child Left Behind, designed their own systems. So some accountability as it relates to testing, but a much smaller footprint is what you've talked about within that, and a lot of flexibility for the State Board to do the work that you think that you want to do. Questions, Dina?
I'm assuming that, I'm seeing that it says that we have flexibility to work with local stakeholders, so we can pull from those individuals kind of their expertise as well, rather than having it top-down, it can be a bottom-up kind of approach.
And that's the way we would plan to do it. If, you know, when the waiver was written and you had to tie teacher evaluation in some form of student achievement, you know, we fought, as Jim mentioned, the federal government on a percent, said we'll do that, and we worked in collaboration with a lot of different groups to put that together. I would see the same type of thing, a lot of different groups analyzing what does Kansas want to have, but ultimately versus the federal government saying this is what's going to have to be in a plan, ultimately you will decide that after you receive input from those groups.
Thank you.
Shelley?
In that reauthorization was also migrant ed, I think.
I'm sorry?
I think migrant education got reauthorized at the same time.
Yes, it did.
Are we going to see much change? Our numbers are down, are they not?
A little bit, but I don't think we're going to see much change in the title or the migrant programs. There is, we believe there's more money put into the bill. How that would be distributed to Kansas, I don't know yet, but we do anticipate there may be a little bit more money across the board for programming.
Okay. At the migrant meeting that I was at, we were talking about someone, you know, we don't get migrant money for refugees, but yet they hold the same problem. The bill didn't come out with adding refugees to that or anything, did it?
No, it did not.
Okay, thank you.
We can talk about ESEA more. Again, we're hoping that the Senate passes it this week, and the President will sign it before Christmas. So what was a very slow process has proven to be a pretty fast process now. Overwhelming support in the House of Representatives, and we believe it will be that same way in the Senate.
Well, basically, there's a lot of items that are included that may not catch people's attention right off. One is, there is a number of, the Secretary shall not, in terms of saying, for instance, one of the things that bothered Congress was that secretaries under the President Administration had taken and said, "Well, if it wasn't in there, I can still do it." Well, now it's the reverse. If it's not in there, you can't do it. So there's a kind of a philosophical shift, which takes away the overriding authority of the Department of Education, in particular, the Secretary of Education. That's a big deal. This is the first time, and anybody, people can remember where a department or secretary was, how would you say this nicely, was limited in their authority and scope of action. You know, and that was a big deal, you know, for the Republican side. That's what they wanted. On the other hand, they gave us clear directions to have high standards, and they were state standards, that the federal government is not going to approve them, kind of the direction at the common core issue of a national curriculum and national standards. It's a state's responsibility, clearly, with assessments, not their state assessments. So, and that fits right in with what we've been doing in terms of, as we move into our next step of dealing with our review of the standards. We've always considered it ours, but now what they're doing is restricting, basically, the federal government through the Department of Education to say, "These are the standards you have to follow." You know, that's a pretty big deal for a lot of people, you know. The accountability system is really, basically, what we've been designing. We're in pretty good shape on almost every one of the initiatives that they have embedded into this new, and it's the Every Student Successful Act, ESSA. I guess it'd drive us crazy with synachronisms. But it's kind of a heady thing because the feds are no longer going to approve the plans. We're going to approve them, you know, for the improvement for priority and focus schools. So that's a big deal. We haven't approved those in the past. The department put them together and we moved them on, but basically it was theirs. So there's, philosophically, there's a lot of changes that are embedded within this that return to the states, and when I say to the states, to the State Boards of Education. It does include a part where we are to consult with the governor, but even that's kind of ambiguous about what all that means. We'll find more about that. But basically, it puts squarely in our hands the power and authority to take control of our state. Now, the real challenge from one side, and I bring this up, is not to lose sight, and this is what, on the Democratic side, not to lose sight of the fact that equity is a big part of what's happened because with No Child Left Behind, with the passage of ESEA, you know, back 14, 15 years ago, was to help the bottom group of students who are typically the ones who don't score well, don't do well, don't graduate, and equity is now our responsibility more than ever. You know, the students are all of our students, and it fits right with our vision, each student doing well. And we have to, it is the state's responsibility to measure and monitor that. You know, that's, before it was the federal government took that role and responsibility, and we just had to answer questions. Now it's our responsibility, and the challenge to us as a State Board is that we have the responsibility to do it, we have the almost moral responsibility as well to make sure all students are going to be served as best we can in terms of, not best we can, that will be served and given the opportunity to be successful. So there's really some big philosophical changes in this, you know, that are there. I'm not so sure I understand all the title stuff, all the title programs and that, but those are dollars and cents and programs, you know. So, yes, we have a real, we have a great opportunity for taking complete control, but at the same time, we have a great responsibility to make sure that equity and success is a part of, for every student.
Yes. Want to just take a couple minutes and highlight from your vision how one school district's starting in earnest to try to implement that, even before you decided on the outcomes and even before you finalized everything. And it's a district not very far from here, Prairie Hills, USD 113, Sabatha, Axtell, and Wetmore. It's an interesting district, but here's what they did in November. They took their freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors, and they had, they didn't have school, as we would think about school that day, but they had the freshmen working with young adults that had just recently gotten out of college and high school, talking about what it takes to be successful. And then they worked on personal plans, study, that we'll be talking about later today, and what it means to have qualified admissions with the Board of Regents and the courses that you would have to take if that's what you want to do, and making sure that freshmen understood, as many freshmen don't quite understand, that credits now count if you're, because they didn't in middle school and high school. Sophomores then, they were using the Cooter, the Kansas Career Pipeline, were investigating careers and interests that they would have. Juniors were either taking some ACT prep work if they were gearing up to take the ACT, or they were also, those that weren't were gearing up or working on their careers with the Kansas Career Pipeline. And the seniors were having mock interviews with community leaders that they brought in for real-world application of trying to get a job. And then they followed that up with the soft skills that are necessary to obtain a job and hold a job. And so I decided to share that with you. They're following up in December, right before Christmas, all of their teachers are going to go out to businesses and spend the day in businesses and talking about how they can have stronger business community partnerships. And this is not a large district, it's not the smallest of our districts either, but it's, you know, it would be a relatively small district trying to do these things. And let me tell you about one of their challenges. They have, in that district, as I mentioned, Axtell, Wetmore, and Sabatha, and they have one counselor that shares time between all those towns. And I believe she was a major player in putting this together, but to have time to follow up with even the students in Sabatha is going to be very challenging, given, you know, the lack of resources that they have in that area. But here's just some of the pictures that I'd share with you from their day in November, where they brought, again, some of the young professionals that came in to talk to the freshmen about what it's going to take to be successful. Here's some sophomores and juniors working on the Kansas Career Pipeline and some ACT prep work in preparation for their future. Here's some of the soft skills discussion that I talked about, which was, you know, if you're going to show up to, in this case, I think they're talking about a formal dinner, how do you behave in an appropriate manner, and what an RSVP is, and, you know, if you're invited to one. And here's an interview session, one of their kids and one of their business leaders conducting an interview. You see the young man did dress appropriately for the interview. So, school districts are taking the challenge that you presented to them already, even though we're still not done in designing it, and they're moving forward, and I asked permission to share this with you this morning, and they graciously said yes. So, small school district, Prairie Hills, USD 113, thanks to their staff and their teachers and their community, and really moving this thing forward and trying to figure out, like all of us are, how do we help every kid be successful as we move forward? With that, be happy to answer any questions? I can.
Randy, do we know at this time, or have any way of knowing if, how many of our districts are in fact utilizing some form of an IPS system?
I don't know if we have any numbers.
Survey results are about two years old. I can look it up, but I would say it was anywhere from 70, 50 percent. I think about 90 percent do, but not with all kids.
And to the depth of which they do, it would vary.
Exactly.
Greatly also.
And gaudeladder is that in conversations at conferences and meetings, more, two years ago, I heard IPS very rarely. Now people are sharing what they're doing.
Right.
You know, and looking for affirmation, looking for ideas and insight, you know, but they're talking about it. The conversations have changed in the field, is what I've noticed over the last.
That's correct. Absolutely.
Just the last six, eight months. Okay, no questions? At this time, I'd like to declare the Citizens' Open Forum of the Kansas State Board of Education open at 10:26 a.m. The State Board provides this opportunity for citizens to share views about topics of interest or issues currently being considered by the State Board. The State Board asks that speakers identify themselves by name and the name of the group they represent, if applicable. The State Board also asks that each speaker focus their remarks on issues or topics. Personal attacks will not be tolerated. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes. Any board questions will be for clarification only. Our first speaker is John Morton, followed by David Linderman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
They say timing is everything, and I will answer the second part of your question. Yes, there are other school districts involved in this process. I bring you greetings from the Cherryvale-Thayer School District. I had the privilege of working with them for the last, for two sessions involved in training, and we have, we've been prototype, trying to prototype a new training model. I'm part of a group that's been working for about the last three and a half, four years on creating hope in educators and in their students. We first thought we were going to write a book, but unfortunately, our colleague Shane Lopez at the University of Kansas beat us to it, wrote an interesting book called Making Hope Happen. You should read this if you haven't, ask for it for Christmas. No, I get nothing from him for plugging that, but it is very good. So that didn't work, so we thought, how could we operationalize this? Because he doesn't really do that in the book. He deals primarily working with individual students. How can we impact teachers and classrooms in terms of creating hope and helping kids focus on a positive future? So what we've done, we've created a model workshop entitled Coaching Hope Through Language, Leadership, and Learning. We finished our second day with the elementary teachers. We started on the other end, opposite Prairie Hills, from Thayer Elementary and from Lincoln Central Elementary in Cherryvale. I have to tell you, it was inspirational, working with those teachers, the new superintendent, George Owens, very visionary, happens to be also a plug for Emporia State, an Emporia State graduate, but delightful person to work with, and we're excited about what's happening. One of the concepts that Lopez has put forth in his book is the concept of nexting. Students that fail have no concept of what's next. They're so focused on what's for lunch because they probably didn't get breakfast that they can't focus on the future. So we're trying to instill that. What we will do with our teachers in Cherryvale is provide individual coaching sessions for them as follow-up. We will provide activities for their classes. It's interesting that you mentioned the high school equivalent. We're also talking about creating Hope Buddies in the district where high school students will come down to the elementary schools and focus on those kinds of things as well. So, hope is alive and well in this season of hope. Second thing, very quickly, because I only have one minute left. Emporia State has been considering for quite some time hosting a statewide conversation on the future of schooling in our state. It dovetails very nicely into what the Board is doing. By the way, in every classroom in Cherryvale in the elementary school, teachers will be wearing the Kansas Can buttons today because we gave them to them yesterday. But we're hoping to host that conversation in conjunction with KSDE, with the State Board, with KNEA, and others. wearing the Kansas Can buttons today because we gave them to them yesterday. But we're hoping to host that conversation in conjunction with KSDE, with the State Board, with KNEA and others. We've been talking about doing this. One of the things in, in conversation with the superintendent yesterday, this is not only a change in our thinking, it's a change in our physical infrastructure, too. He's, he's grappling with some issues in the district because their infrastructure does not effectively deal with 21st century learning needs. So, hope is alive and well in the field, and I just wanted to share that with you today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is David Linderman, followed by Tom Krebs.
Good morning. I'm Dave Linderman. I'm here on behalf of the Kansas Division for Early Childhood, which is a subdivision of the Division for Early Childhood of the Council for Exceptional Children. This professional membership organization requests that the board reconsider the pre-K assignment policy recently passed. In his recent speech, Kansas Can, Commissioner Watson said, "The best bang for your buck is early childhood." As a part of the vision for education in Kansas, he realizes the importance of early childhood education in preparing children to enter kindergarten and to be successful. Kansas won't realize this vision if young children do not have appropriately trained or prepared teachers. In the 21st century, early childhood education is recognized as the foundation for the preparation of students to be college and career-ready. Central program quality is appropriately prepared teachers. Evidence has demonstrated that individuals prepared as teachers and who are appropriately credentialed better equip young children to enter school and to achieve superior outcomes throughout their life. For Kansas children to be ready for kindergarten, they must have the most qualified teachers we can possibly have in their classrooms. If we believe this, we must eliminate the policy that allows teachers or individuals to teach in educational settings that they were not appropriately prepared to teach. We must have the best teachers we can for our youngest learners. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Roberts, you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, I, I signed on when John Morton was still speaking. Could you enlighten me on how we might welcome people into the classroom who haven't necessarily matriculated at a college of education but have demonstrable skill sets and communication skills and can do the job?
I think, again, what the research has shown is that, that people need to be prepared as teachers to do the highest quality that can be provided to our students. If they're not prepared prior to entering the classroom, they should be required then to go back to school and obtain appropriate training and appropriate credentials.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Krebs.
Well, good morning, all. It's been a busy weekend. First of all, I want to say thanks to Chair McNeese and Commissioner Watson for being at our convention this past weekend. We had a very successful convention, well over 500 school leaders attended, lots of good sessions, and one of the main things that we did on Sunday at our delegate assembly, we approved our legislative report, and it's in front of you being passed around, and it's got a few changes from last year, but we're, we're pleased with our legislative process. We shared the draft all over the state, had a lot of input, and at your leisure, you can read what we believe to be necessary in the state from a legislative perspective. So, again, thanks to, to Jim and Randy for coming down. I think it's quite interesting, the comments that the commissioner made about ESSA, E-S-S-A. The National School Board Association has been very active in the passage of that bill and the comments that Chairman McNeese and Commissioner Watson made about local control. A good deal of that language came from an NSBA amendment that made its way into the bill, and so clearly, we're, we're excited about the opportunity at the local level and at the state level to have more input. But I think some of the comments that, again, Chairman McNeese mentioned, the, the tension between a Republican version and a Democratic version, both sides got a little, both sides gave up some, so clearly, money looks to be pretty good in the bill as, as it stands right now, but, but certainly, we're going, as a state, have to step up for the responsibility side that we have in the past essentially let the feds have. The last thing I want to make comments on really calls into, again, some of the comments made about earlier, Dr. Morton and our previous speaker, that one of the things that we did at the conference that we've always done is called Meeting All Kids Needs, and I just want to share with you very briefly about the visit I made to Derby. They have a class called Success 101. It's not a, it's not a graduate requirement because it, they don't want people to come in after ninth grade and, and have to take it after ninth grade, but the two most important parts of it are financial literacy, which you, as the board, will be pleased to hear, and the other part is career planning and everything that you were talking about. So, this is a class that Derby has put in to help their kids. So, I like the USD 113 shout-out, but I wanted to point that out to Derby. Also, Derby has an outstanding early childhood program that we visited called the Opportunity Project. And the bottom line, and to quote a man that's well-respected in Kansas educational circles, Max Heim, "When you visit, you learn." And I know that a number of you are making visits to schools. I hate to say this, but the fact is, we're having a terribly difficult time getting legislators into schools. And, and the fact is, legislators often don't have any understanding of all the programs that districts are implementing from individual plans of study to early childhood projects to technical education, just amazing amount of programs. And until they get in and learn about what's going on in schools, they will make decisions without all the information they need to have. So, with, with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. The State Board Citizens' Open Forum is closed at ten thirty-seven a.m. We'd like to thank our speakers for sharing their views with the board. The State Board will determine if any of these issues should be addressed in an agenda item or at a future meeting. Thank you for speaking with us. Well, out of character completely for me, we're going to have a 10-minute break. Oh, let's, well, let's, let's go on. Let's, let's, let's get, Randy's going to come up here and talk to us about our recent retreat discussions and the measures that we, we are, we're looking for, the outcomes as we established. So, what are these specific indicators? And moving on, we said we had a vision, now let's make it work.
Twenty-seven different cities and online presence, many miles that Brad and I put on the road, and that you joined, few retreats, back out on the road, conversations with people, easy work is done. The easy work is done. You have a vision. People have embraced that across the state. You put forth a bold new day in education, and now it's up to the State Board of Education and the people of Kansas to determine how we know when we step on the moon. It's not going to be quite as easy as watching that fuzzy image that we watched maybe of Neil Armstrong at the time, but that's what we want to talk about today with possible action in January. You know, we've thought about this in our work along the lines of, of the space program that was in place for a decade to land a man on the moon, but I, I use this quote often because I think it's so instructive of your vision, especially the, the part in yellow. It's a challenge that we are willing to accept. Reauthorization of ESSA, it's going to give you that opportunity to accept new challenges. One that you are willing to not postpone, unwilling to postpone, and, so we're, that's why we're, we've started on this, and one we intend to win for our kids. And this will be the most significant challenge that any state board, I think, in our history has ever undertaken. Each child being successful, each child. And as John talked about in Cherryville Thayer, and we saw at Prairie Hills, there's a lot of school districts excited about the opportunities. I always say, every night, I'm a little scared and a little excited, and I hope the dreams that I have about it, about the excitement, happen just before I wake up and not the part that we're a little scared, because this is a, a major undertaking, and today we'll start the, the discussion that you've had at retreats about how to measure, how to measure our moonshot. So, how will we know that we're helping every student be successful? Number one, as we talked in our retreats, is the possibility of measuring graduation rates. Currently, and, and I have not seen the 2015, but they're out, I understand, I'm looking at Brad, fourteen, I'm sorry, just under, or just under eighty-six percent as a state. And then, of course, we're going to have to look at subpopulations, as Jim mentioned earlier, make sure that we're, that we have students with disabilities, students of color, students that may be in poverty, that we're reaching every student. So, one of the things I want you to think about as we talk about measuring a vision, we can't, we've come out of a system that said by law, every student had to be at 100%. Every, every, every school had to be at 100%. So, while oftentimes we have visions and missions where we want 100%, that's much different than when you put that in law. So, when people say, "What would be your goal?", I think 100%, like for every kid to graduate high school. All right? That's not putting it in law, that's putting it into a vision, but that would be our aspirations, would be that every student has a quality pre-K through 12 experience and would graduate high school. Now, I've been traveling a fair amount recently, talking, and I'm going to travel some this week with Blake Flanders, the CEO at Kansas Board of Regents, and I joke with him because the common definition for high school graduation is, how many kids, upon arriving as freshmen, four years later, graduated? In college, it's a six-year cohort. So, I said, "Well, let me get that right. You're paying for that experience, we get six years to get, get you through, but four years for the high school." That's, that's, I think because many kids don't want to attend prom that many times, probably, they, they want out, but it would be a four-year grad, graduation rate cohort would be how we would measure that. We could look at five-year. We're going to have to have some discussions about GED. We had a great discussion, pre-K, sixteen task force about GED, and would we count GED, but high school graduation rate, as, as your discussion, we think would be the first step toward ensuring that every student is successful. The, the odds of going on and, and ever being in the middle class, if you drop out of a Kansas high school today, are very slim. Not impossible, but very slim, and that's just simply because the job market is requiring more and more to an entry level.
Randy, do you want to take some questions or comments as you go along?
Yes, yes, I do.
Sally Cobble?
Thank you. I clicked that before you talked about the definition. I agree with you. We have to look at what we're going to define as a graduation rate, because I really believe what the feds set up is unfair to the student if we're going to be a student-driven system.
And, and maybe down the road, you know, as we look at this 10 years out, that the merger, the meshing between higher ed and K-12 will be more seamless. Jumping off points could be multiple and earlier, later, you know, but as we take a look at how we help every kid be successful.
Now, Randy, in all of the reauthorization, has the federal government changed their definition?
Not to my understanding. It's still looking at the four-year cohort, and then you can have a five-year cohort, but they, they use four-year cohorts so they can measure every state with the same measurement.
And so, how much problem would it be if we, as a state, had one definition and the federal government have another?
I think we could do that. Yeah, I think we could do that. It would make it impossible for us to compare to other countries or other states if we had a different measure, but I think we could do it. It just, you're not going to be able to, there'll be no way to compare, say, to Alabama or Germany, if they're using a four-year cohort, and for example, we used a five or a six, unless there's, you know, some other universal agreement about that.
Graduation and, and college and career-ready are, are not the same thing.
That's correct.
You know, and there is something in, and I, I, you know, when you read the pages of ESSA about credit recovery and, and extended time and, and such, there, there is, there's cracks in there that give us some opportunity. I don't know, we, we don't know exactly what that all means, you know, but graduation rates, again, they're not synonymous with college and career-ready, and some new definitions and tracking, there's issues about how we measure graduation across the country.
So...
Is the eighty-six really eighty-six percent? Or, you know, is it just to get kids out with a diploma, or is it to have students move through the system and be college and career-ready? So, I think we have a lot of conversation that we could have on that very issue.
Jim, are you saying that we might want to look at that before we determine that high school graduation rates is something that we use as an outcome?
It, it, it might be an outcome, it probably will be and should be an outcome as we start, but it might change as we move along.
Okay, because I, I kind of liked what you just said.
Well...
And one of the things you'll want to consider is, take a look at your outcomes as a whole.
Yes.
And how that helps you look at a particular school, you know, in, in reference to accreditation. Because you're right, I mean, former high school principal, you could graduate every kid tomorrow. Doesn't mean they have any skills, but you could, you can march them across the stage, and that's what we don't want to have. We don't want to have unintended consequences. We want kids to have meaningful pre-K through 12 experience that leads toward graduation.
We, we could probably have a long and protracted discussion on what graduation rates really mean, you know, but what's more important is having students really college and career-ready. How do we measure that and, and, but we move society as well because graduation rate, graduation is, is so embedded in our culture of, of, of transition in, in our country. You know, I, I used to say, as a high school principal, people would go nuts, or they'd have 20 or 30 people from their family, you know, show up for high school graduation, but nobody showed up when you got a master's degree. Didn't make sense to me, you know? Not, nobody showed up, but, okay, you got one, so what? You know, and nice, but it's just such a, a big deal, you know? It's kind of confusing to me at times, but it, it is for many families, for a first-time student to graduate is, it, 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 it is, and for students who are, have had challenges, it's, it's a great experience to see the energy they bring when they truly do that, but we're always worried about, are they college and career-ready? That's the big thing. Dina Horst?
Thank you. Does the federal government recognize that special needs students are generally given five years and maybe six for graduation?
Twenty-one.
So, in a sense, we would have two different graduation rates because of whether you're special needs or whether you've gone through the regular program?
That's correct. I mean, you do have until age 21. You, you also have many surveys that talk about the percent of 24-year-olds. I often use 24-year-old that has a high school education or something which gives more lengthy time, but that's a survey method of looking backward. It's, it's hard to get that statistic if you're sitting at, at a K-12, but Gallup and some of those polls will poll people, and that's a sense.
And then, just kind of a thought came to mind, if our focus is college and career-ready, then... then, and I think you made this statement as well, that maybe graduation rates aren't as important as college and career ready is. So, um.
Personally, I'd like both of them to be together, mean the same thing.
We have a, I hadn't thought about it in that way, but it's an interesting consideration.
There are layers and layers to this because we also have rules about funding. Uh, students leaving early and losing fundings, students staying longer and not being funded. Uh, that, that, there's just, this is, there's, there's layers and layers to this. Uh, but that shouldn't deter us in our efforts to make this a meaningful and relevant uh, experience at high school diploma and graduation. But we want to have with it that they're, they're college and career ready.
Well, number two, I think go hand in hand, what you've been talking about. So you graduate and then you go on to something post-secondary. So this one becomes, if the, the first one was hard to define, I think this one becomes really difficult because there's no universal kind of definition of where the handoff point is between K-12 and higher ed. So I'd like to walk you through at least the discussions that we're having around the state and get your feedback on that. So again, high school graduation. And if you graduate high school with one of two things, a industry-recognized certificate, it's part of your definition. So if a student graduates high school with a, graduation high school with a CNA or welding certificate or a construction certificate or a, uh, business certificate, that would be counted as a completion of something post-secondary. Or if a student graduated high school and had twelve college credit hours toward a certificate or a degree, you could count that as your end of the post-secondary, uh, arrangement. If a student graduated high school and had neither of those or had only a portion of that completed, we would then look to the next semester that the student enrolled, which would either be the summer or the fall after graduation and ask the same question. In the first semester after enrollment, did they complete a certificate? Did they complete twelve credit hours leading toward greater degree program? If the answer was yes, they would be a completer under this definition. Now, are they completer? No, but at that point, higher ed assumes the responsibility for completing them if they haven't completed. So there's nothing magical about the twelve hours of the certificate, but you're going to have to draw some line of where the pass-off point is from you to higher education. Unless you're want to say, unless a student actually graduates with a credential or associate degree or a baccalaureate degree. And most of the school people I talked to are a little concerned if we're taking kids four years post-high school and it's all upon our measurement for that. So thus, I'll emphasize again, you graduate high school. If you have completed a certificate in high school, and many kids do today, you have completed something post-secondary while in high school, which is perfectly fine.
Could we include in that definition, you know, Avid, IB, Project Lead the Way, Regents curriculum?
I mean, we can, we can include whatever we want to count. What we, what we want in any of these outcomes is, as we design the outcomes, are they leading us to the success of each student? And success in the definition that we'll talk about tomorrow, that, but what you've already, what you've already have, and we may tweak it tomorrow, says that a student will either have a credential or be a complete something post-secondary. So, but we can do any of those that you would like. Uh, we're just trying to figure out what are the best outcomes to measure that give us some predictive power. You know, right now, we've been looking at test scores, graduation and test scores. And they have some high predictive power. ACT has some high predictive power, but they're not, as all of you know, it's not a fail-safe system. Ran into a, a parent of a student that I know well. He happened to graduate in 2011 with my son. And he was extremely dyslexic and had a learning disability, but a really great kid, hardworking and great family. And he scored sixteen on the ACT test. Uh, in May of 2015, he graduated, four years after high school, the bachelor's degree in engineering. He had to do so by going through Hudson Community College because he couldn't qualify for the Board of Regents. He had to take summer, he took summer school every year and he had a tutor. But he, but I'm just saying, nothing that you pick is fallible, alright? I mean, there's, there's going to be holes in anything we pick. Uh, and certainly test scores have been that for some kids and they predicted some, some achievement. So again, we're looking at a credential or twelve hours, either during high school or in the semester after high school. And I'll be, I'll stop there. So graduation with that.
Well, I bring up these other programs because they have, they're credentialing agencies in their own right. You know, they have programs that are put there, whether it be Avid or Project Lead the Way or the Regents curriculum, you know, they're completers. And there's a, we, I don't want to differentiate between, you know, a, a industry-certified uh, or industry-certified program to a academically-certified program. You know, there's ways to measure those. And we know that students, you know, who participate in those programs successfully, you know, have a higher probability of success in the future. Not, that's my concern, my issue. You know, there are, there are in internal systems already there that we could support and build on across the curriculum in terms of measuring student success in high school.
Any other questions about those two? Because the third is also companion to the first two. Remedial rate then, once they get there. We've had a long discussion at our retreat about this. Uh, and our researchers say that this, while this data is extremely important to know whether students are prepared, it's not very clean data uh, for a variety of reasons. And I'll just walk you through two different scenarios. We do not get universal data from our private colleges in Kansas on remedial rates. The Board of Regents get accurate data from their institutions, but uh, our private colleges don't universally, uh, produce, uh, the remedial rate of students. So if you were in a community where the majority of your students went to uh, a private college in Kansas, it's possible that they would not report out the remedial rate of the kids that are there. Give you a different, another example. Let's say in any of our high schools, we had twins. And they both scored eighteen on the ACT in mathematics. And they both want to be a welder. And they graduate from the same high school and they both go to Washburn Tech. Just, I'm, I'm picking all those at random. And one twin says, I want to be a welder and get a certificate. And the other twin says, I want to be a welder and get an associate degree. They both scored eighteen on the ACT. Well, the student says, I want an associate degree, is going to show up as needing remediation because they are not going to be able to go into college algebra, where the student in welding going for the certificate will never show up because they don't have to take college algebra to get the certificate in welding. And that's why we don't know is that at a state level, whether if you started to look at this data and compared Prairie Hill School District, which we were highlighting, I don't think you could be assured that that data would be a hundred percent accurate because you wouldn't know unless you delved into it where their kids went to school and what programming they went into. So for your consideration, we like that data, but we think it may be better to use it locally and not do it at a state level.
I'm reminded of Zen and the Art of Motorcycle Maintenance. Ever read that? Good book, I recommend it. He speaks about a welder, if you're going to hire a welder, you better make sure which kind you need because there are two kinds of welders. There's a production welder, there's a maintenance welder. The production welder hates to be burdened with details. Does the same cut or the same braze or the same connection time after time. Kind of like a gentleman I knew that worked at Griffin Wheel. When the railroad wheels come out of the furnace, he cut the little tip off the hub day after day and he got good at it. And he was a production welder. If you have a maintenance welder, they're the sort of person that wants to fix something. They don't want to look at the same thing twice. They might size up the job for three days and then do one weld and never see it again. So we talk about what it takes to be a welder. Make sure you know which kind of welder you need. We've got that to weave into the tapestry.
Kathy Bush?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I just kind of wanted to, on the post-secondary completion piece, kind of echo what Jim said. I think we may need to look into that a little bit more and look at some of the other, there might be some options that might potentially be included in that, that I think are good programs and could be easily included in that piece as far as a likelihood of, uh, success post-secondarily. So I think we need to take a look a little bit more at that.
Okay. Sally Cobble?
Thank you. I agree with Kathy on that we need to look into this. She and I served on that, um, committee with KSDE and with, um, K-Board. I originally thought that we were, we were coming up with a remedial program that we were working with the schools to help, to so the remedial work was done in high school.
That is correct, we are.
But what I keep hearing is the college algebra piece. Well, I know that's important, but I think there's more to remedial than college algebra. And so I'm hearing two different programs. Are they really one? Or where are we with that? I, I am, I have gotten lost.
Okay, maybe I can help. Uh, typically, students that do not score, uh, on the ACT or in past years on the compass or AccuPlacer, which is a, a test derived by SAT and the College Board and ACT to place students, would go into remedial English, remedial reading and remedial math. At the post-secondary level, that's correct. And so what was started before I got here, that Brad was instrumental in and the committee you're talking about is, the majority of those students, it's college algebra that, that, that keeps them in the remedial rate. That we would have a course in high school that if you passed that with the outcomes, you would be admitted then directly into college algebra with, you know, we would say you had the skills to be ready to go. And that thus, the remedial course could take place in high school and not take place at the post-secondary.
Okay. Let me, um, give you another thought on this. To me, if a child isn't passing our state standard, our, our state assessment in, what sophomore, then they are probably going towards remediation. If we are looking at a student-driven program instead of a course where we put them in, that might look different.
That's correct.
And, um, see if I can verbalize this, what I'm trying to say. What we also discovered on that committee is that the students didn't need a whole course around that. They needed tutoring and they would drop out if they had to take the class. But if they would have been tutored instead, their success rate of staying would have been greater. So where does that information fit into the vision of our students graduating without remediation? And I'm thinking of a more student-driven system instead of a class that you put kids in.
And it could be, Sally, I think, I think what we're saying here, too many kids are arriving at a plan that they've chosen, which is going to require, uh, it's going to be an associate degree or above, a baccalaureate degree, uh, masters or PhD. And they are not ready in the definition of, of higher education to take the entry-level courses of either English, uh, reading or, uh, college algebra. And how do we, how do we get lower that so that there's more kids who are ready if that's their plan of study? I think there are many ways we go about getting, getting to that level. One could be a course, one could be individual tutoring. One could be a conversation about, a broader conversation in the future about, does every degree need college algebra? Because that's, you know, or is college statistics or another course more appropriate for some? But that's a, that's a larger discussion down the road, uh, but certainly we've had at times.
Janet Waugh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This remediation rate is really something I've always been concerned about, frankly. Uh, I remember when I served on the, I want to thank you for bringing up that welding thing. I had no clue that that was true. You know, that was, that's very interesting to hear that. But, uh, many years ago, when I served on the P-16, we were talking about remediation rates. And I specifically brought up at that time, my concern, which I still have and maybe it's been corrected, so I, this is why I guess I'm asking about. I think there's a difference between a remediation rate for a student who graduated from high school this year and one that's twenty-five or thirty and coming back. You know, to, they've decided they want to get their education and they find out they need remediation at that point. Have those been, I mean, at that time, they told me they were going to look into it, but I don't know it's ever been looked into because I recognize it's a challenge.
And I'm going to look to Brad because I haven't been a part of any discussion about adult ed programming coming back.
Like I said, if they come back and they need remediation, that shouldn't be part of the...
Right, it should be part of the...
But yet, I think at that time, it was.
Well, they're, they're not part of our denominator when you're looking at a cohort graduating class. We're just looking remedial rates of students a year after. A, a twenty-eight-year-old, his cohort class may have graduated, you know, nine years ago and we don't ever go back and put them back into the denominator.
But we have, we have the ability at this time to do that, is that correct? I mean, because at that time, they didn't.
We, we don't do it. Our data system isn't old enough. But we start with the graduating class of 2007.
Right.
So if you can, I'm going to, you're already doing the math here. A twenty-eight-year-old isn't twenty-eight years old yet from the graduate, you know what I mean? In the future, we could go add someone back to a denominator, that's possible, but we currently don't do that.
Okay, well, at the time, I think they were just reporting how many were enrolled in remediation.
Right.
You know, not, not where they came from.
Oh, right.
That's what I, that's what, that's the difference.
And the data we've been using recently is remedial rate coming out of high school.
Okay, because that's what I, that's, okay, then that's, that's the...
You asking if those adults were...
Were, were part, no, because they would just say, we have fifty students attending remedial, needing remediation and they could have been anywhere from eighteen to sixty.
That's correct, yeah.
Or older, probably.
The, the, the data we're looking at, which are in the twenty-seven, twenty-eight percent, remains fairly constant.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
The number of kids leaving high school immediately going to a post-secondary and they're being placed in remedial.
Okay, thank you.
We may want to take a break and come back and do the next three. Only because we were going to take a break around eleven, so.
Yes, I'd like to finish with Dina Horst and then we can take a break.
All right, I'll try to make this quick. I have heard no mention of military. So where do they fit in?
They would be a post-secondary attendance completion upon entering boot camp.
Okay.
We do, we do not, we are not able to access at the current time. We can get who, uh, signs up and who attends boot camp. Once they're in that system, at current time, we do not have access to records post-that. But, um, we've been told from all the, our... But we've been told from all the armed services that if a student actually enlists and shows up day one, they have an extremely high success rate of completing. There are many people that enlist and never show up, for a variety of reasons.
Okay.
The military would certainly be post-secondary.
All right. Thanks.
Okay, we're going to take a 10-minute break. We'll be back here at 11:22. Sharp. People are here. Okay, Randy. Ken Willard has asked for a comment or question. Mr. Willard?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It seems to me that, and this discussion's helpful, obviously, but it seems to me it's going to take us back to actually more clearly defining what a high school graduate is. And I'm going to suggest that there may be, the high school graduation might mean more than one thing for us, when we get finished with this. And as you know, I wrote up and sent to you all, and I think it's in your packet, and that's for later in the agenda, but a definition of what a college and career-ready graduate looks like. And in it, I said that it is a high school graduate who meets these criteria. So I'm thinking that we have to figure out how to encompass all kids in this. I'm just suggesting that a high school graduate could mean, just for measurement purposes, and that they've completed four years of high school studies. Or it could mean that they have completed four years of what we established as coursework for four years, in less than three years. So they've done the equivalent of four years in a given period of time. And then the second level of high school graduation might be a college and career graduate, and we define clearly what that college and career-ready graduate, and we define clearly what that means. And I don't think that does any injustice to anybody, but it helps to clarify things, because we just can't lump everything into high school graduate. I don't think. And I think that's kind of what the struggle we're in here right now. So I'm just throwing that out for discussion, and not asking for a decision on that, but I think this, it's just going to take us back to the first step again, and clarify where we are there, and then I think it'll be easier to break out the parts of it. Thank you.
You know, oftentimes, when I speak now, I say, if we leave our time together, and you don't have a headache, we're not, I haven't done my job, because this really causes you to think about the restructure of school, as we know it, you know, to help every kid be successful, and then it really becomes difficult in how we think about the measures of the outcomes. But that's what we're all doing, you know, in some extent, so, good. As you know, those three, we're kind of talking about the end, we have this unique one that we discussed at great length. Need to come to school, assuming that most students today come to school in kindergarten, even though state law says you don't have to attend until you're six and first grade. The vast majority of our students start in kindergarten in Kansas. And unfortunately, in 2015, we have students who arrive in kindergarten with a oral vocabulary of less than 300 words. We also have students arriving in kindergarten in Kansas that can read at a second or third grade level. And Brad would tell you that the biggest gap, both behaviorally and academically, in any of our systems, those 13 years, happens upon that entry point. It's the biggest gap we have. And while we make significant inroads to closing that gap, it never occurs, because they start off so far behind. Talk to any speech-language pathologist about the value of language. And, you know, there's always unintended consequences. I remember with two shows in the, you know, came out, Sesame Street, which we all know, and a more local show, Rumpa Room, came out, and great educational programming, and it was, and still is. But what we've found out over the years is that putting a child in front of a TV is not learning. And it stifles, it stifles the communication, the oral communication that's so valuable to brain development. So as you looked at this, there was a long discussion at our retreats about how do we know that a student's involved in a quality pre-K experience from birth to five? And as you know, those vary widely in Kansas, because there's no mandate to do anything in the birth-to-five realm. So we have great parents who are doing just that in many of our communities. We have great Head Start programs that are doing that in many of our poverty areas. We have the Four-Year-Old At-Risk Program, monitored here in the Kansas State Department of Education. We have Early Head Start. We have Parents as Teachers. We have faith-based pre-K in some of our communities that do an outstanding job. We have for-profit in some communities that do an outstanding job. And all of those feed into our system, I mean, into kindergarten. And so as you look at this, this would not be a measure of the system itself. It would be able to tell you, in what communities do we need to pull together resources to help students in that, those communities be more ready? So I'll use the town that I spent the last 22 years in, Ephraim McPherson, and I'm making this number up. 85 percent of all students arrived on day one of kindergarten ready, both behaviorally and academically to learn. We don't have to put many resources into that community. But in my hometown, at Coffeyville, that number was less than 30 percent. And so that community has already, and you know this, partnered up with private donors. They raised about $800,000. They partnered with Head Start. They partnered with the Four-Year-Old At-Risk. They partnered with special ed dollars. And they had an entrepreneur that gave them a large check. By the way, that gentleman, if you get to know him, he would write some more large checks, because he believes in early childhood education. And in January, three and four-year-olds in Coffeyville are going to have the opportunity to have universal pre-K access. That, I think, will turn that community around over the long term. It's going to be long-term. But in some communities, we don't need to do that. So that's what the kindergarten readiness would be. Where do we need to target the resources, and in some cases, bring together the resources in order to assist the school districts that need it, or the communities? Remember, as we go into these outcomes, one of the major changes is schools, parents, communities, business partners are all working together. All working together. Not, not we have a council and we talk to each other, really working together. So this will be community-based, but education-based, too. So you're not measuring Fredonia as to whether they're any good or not upon entering kindergarten, but in Fredonia, if only half the kids are entering ready, then what do we do to help every kid in Fredonia enter ready, both academically and behaviorally?
Ken Willard, I'm sorry. I lost the screen for a moment. I was looking for it.
Dr. Watson, I agree with what you said, and like the way you stated it, because I have a concern about this piece, and if we follow the direction that you kind of gave in your comments there, I think we're okay. Because really, there are lots of resources out there, but sometimes they're not properly managed and focused where they need to be. And so I think that may be a bigger thing. But what I want to, I'm concerned about is ensuring that we don't let this discussion take us down the rabbit trail of an unnecessary credentialing mechanism, that we have more credentialed people than we've ever had, and we are where we are. So I don't think, I just want everybody to know that I'm reluctant to go down that road of another credentialing process to determine who's able to participate with approval in kindergarten readiness. So, thank you.
I try to say, whenever I speak, the greatest number of kids in poverty, the greatest number of minority students who live in three counties in this state, Sedgwick, Shawnee, and Wyandotte. And in those three counties, somewhere between a third and a half of those kids show up to kindergarten ready to learn. Just think about that. Now, I doesn't mean the most school districts, but the most students are in those three counties that we could help tremendously, but, you know, if Coffeyville were here, we'd tell you that it's some heavy lifting, but together, all the factions, to make that happen. But this would give you some indication of where the target should be. So, going on. Jay Scott would like for me to put a plug in for CTE and say, if we did the individual plan of study, we don't have to worry about anything else. There's some truth to that. So when I said I stay awake at night, sometimes excited, sometimes scared, this one really is the forefront of both of those. Two years ago, you recommended that every student have an individual plan of study. You didn't mandate it, but you recommended it. And that's why we see that many school districts have implemented that to some degree. The individual plan of study's not a thing. It's a process. And it certainly isn't just, what courses do you want to take next year? That's the end of the process, in fact, after you've done a lot of other things. And it's a labor-intensive process of studying that with kids and parents, and designing the future, and constantly revisiting that, as not to track any one kid too early into something that they change their mind on. But really start off with some broad themes and end with that. Higher ed has a lot of interest in the plan of study. And in our development, what we're looking at is designing systems or allowing systems that would take a student from our K-12 system right into higher ed. Whatever, again, go back to the welder at Washburn Tech, or in Allen County Community College, or at Fort Hays State University. And so they would join us in helping develop this. And here, the next few weeks or months, the joint committee that we have with Kboard are going to get together and start looking at some of those things together, because we have a joint, and we're trying to do this together, trying to work together, and we all have the same interest. We're going to have a retreat in the next few months, of where we're going to spend probably a good 90 minutes, walking you through an example of a really good process on individual plan of study, so you can see it, and the complexity of doing it well. That being said, there'll be some advisor models in school that do it well, there'll be some counselor models that do it really well, there may be some advisor, not in the teacher-adviser realms that do it really well, you know, we'll leave that to the individual schools. But if we go down this road, every student would need a valuable process of an individual plan of study done well. Done well. And I can't stress that enough, because if it's done poorly, this will not be a good thing. If it's done well, everything about school changes. It does. Everything about it. You know, you've heard me say, you see a young man, and he becomes an Eagle Scout, and does a community project, and we're so proud, and there's pictures, and the kid gets no credit for that in school. Think about that. How that could change, if that was part of that student's plan, and how we would look at our outcomes and time. It can be mind-moggling, but that's, the individual plan of study could be the hub of where all this other fits in, if we do it well.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the individual's plan of study has huge potential. And in my conversations with various people in my district, they think it does, too. Their concern is the implementation, and the support that they would need as far as, you know, what are best practices? What are implementation ideas? And the support that they would need. Where, now, my particular districts, most of the schools are larger, but, you know, we've got all sorts of sizes of districts and schools throughout the state. So I'm certain that the model is going to have to look different, depending upon the school, the district, and the needs of those students in that particular district. So as we move forward with this, I want to do so thoughtfully, and with the idea of what support can we provide for folks? Because I think people are very interested in doing this, and like you said, I agree, it has the potential of really changing things. But we've got to provide the support that folks need in order to implement this, and, you know, we certainly don't want this to be an unfunded mandate, because, you know, folks are, they need to figure out how to do this, and how to do this well. So it can benefit the students, because I think it has, I agree with you, it does have huge potential.
One of the challenges, as all of you know, is one of the areas that most school districts have cut are counselors. Our counselor-to-pupil ratio in Kansas is around 401 at the secondary level. And so counselor models will be difficult. Many elementary schools cut that, you know, in budget cuts. It's one of the areas that people look at, or, I was talking about school district earlier, that share counselor between buildings. So, yes, if you go forward with the individual plan of study even greater than recommendation, training, and help, and best practices, and models will be extremely important, and monitoring and discussion about, if this goes forward, it cannot be a check-the-box-I-did-it. You know, I'll tell you another story. Years ago, when we were just starting to play with this in McPherson, we sat down with some parents, and a young lady, who was a senior at the time, said, I want to go into nursing. I've made my decision. And the parents were happy, and she was happy, and so we started to look at, where do we want to go to study to be a nurse? And the parents said, well, we don't have to worry about that, we're going to Kansas State. Because everyone in our family goes to Kansas State. And it's been her lifelong dream to be a cheerleader at Kansas State. There's only one problem with that. Kansas State doesn't have a nursing program. So we had a great discussion, and the young lady went to Kansas State, and majored in pre-nursing, and two years into it, was a cheerleader, transferred to Wichita State, to complete her nursing, and it cost her a year extra, and her parents were fine with it, because that's what they wanted. See? It wasn't enough just to know what she wanted to be, it was also what the student and the parent wanted to do. And as long as they knew, if you go to Kansas State, you know, and I love Kansas State, but they don't have a nursing program, so it's going to be a little difficult to graduate with a nursing program, and they understood that, and they still made that decision. But that was, that's part of talking to families about what the individual plan of study would be.
Well, Randy, I'm glad you say that it's not about a process and checkoff. If you actually embrace the IPS, individual plans of study, it's a cultural change, it's a belief change in how you operate and run your school. And if it's not at that level, you're not doing IPS.
That's exactly right. And it will change everything you do, if it's not at that level.
Deana Horst.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I look through this entire list, I see the beginning of school and the end of school. And I don't see the indicators of progress in between. And I think maybe we need to think about how we, how we monitor that, or have schools monitor it locally.
And we certainly would want schools to do it.
I'm sure that they will, but...
The question becomes, do you want that to be monitored at the local level through the accreditation, or do you want it to be monitored at your level? Because you know what happens when we do it at our level. We'll get darned.
Yeah.
So we've got to make sure that that's what we want.
I'm just bringing it up, that I think somewhere we need to indicate that that's an important component as well. It's not just the end game and the beginning game. So, just a comment.
And the last thing that you discussed at your retreats is that, right along with academics, social, emotional, character growth is extremely important. But that should be measured locally, with us, again, giving some good... But that, that should be measured locally with us, again, giving some good resources, best practices, possibly some measurements that could be used locally and try to help, help move students to a better place, social and emotional, not just the kids in crisis. I had a conversation with the superintendent this week that said, you know, for the first time, we're seriously thinking about having a mental health facility in our building. There's been some clinics, as you know, on the physical side and some buildings, but the mental health issues have become so severe and disruptive that even one or two students can really, you know, create havoc. And, and as you know, there's less resources sometimes out there to help those people. We see that play out in many ways, not only in our state but across the country. So helping students grow with that socially, emotionally, I think we'd, going back to Dina's comment earlier, this would be something that we would check on through the accreditation process, but wouldn't necessarily come here to be rank ordered by, by school districts if we go forward. And see how simple that was? Those six little items for discussion? We've only had two retreats talking about it, and now another almost hour talking about it again. And just really for us to hear what you want to do and bring you back a proposal that maybe you want to move forward on, so.
Thank you very much. It's good to have that conversation. And obviously, there's a lot of energy behind the topics that we have in front of us and how we're going to measure or begin to measure the implementation of our vision. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is actually an action item. We, last month, heard from our, our team regarding the licensure program standards for English reading specialists, pre-K to 12, and Technology 6 through 12. And we have with us today Scott Myers to bring us up to date and move us along with the action item.
Okay, as you recall, there we go. As Chairman McNeese just mentioned, we presented these last month as a receive item for you. The program standards for English 5'8", English 6'12", Reading Specialist PK-12, and then also for Technology. And we have with us today, to field any questions you might have for them regarding this, these different areas, Dr. Melissa Reed from Emporia State University and Mr. Kim Stewart from Fort Hays State University. Dr. Reed is here for the English and the Reading Specialist, and Mr. Stewart is here for the Technology. So there you stand, ready to answer any questions or if you want to just take action.
Sally Cobble?
Thank you. It may be a question for you.
Certainly.
Instead of, first of all, I would move that we accept these standards. We have had many conversations around English language learners. And a lot of schools are having to get that as an endorsement or a master's, where I firmly believe that every teacher needs to come out with that. And in the standards, well, what are they called? Are they called standards that were recent? Program standards, okay. There's nothing in them that indicated that the teachers that come out with these degrees would have anything, methods class in English, in ESL. So are we looking at, I guess my dream was that every teacher that graduates eventually would have a methods class in that or have it included in the program standards for each coursework? Because I don't think you can go anywhere and teach in the state of Kansas anymore without needing that skill. So, philosophy, what are you thinking?
We have a deal for you today, Ms. Cobble. Everything's on sale. Online endorsements, they're a parallel project taking place to what you were mentioning there with ELL, 15 years from now. I don't care what classroom you are or what school you are in the state of Kansas, there will be an element of online taking place. It just will. It's where we're headed. And so rather than backing out and having just an online endorsement unto itself, there's a project taking place as we speak with our higher ed division, Catherine and Ann, to accentuate through the professional ed standards the concepts that deal with being an online instructor, being able to properly, the pedagogy behind, properly conducting an online course. I feel that's a prime place also to accentuate the ELL and the diverse learner needs because the diverse learner needs are already a part of the professional ed standards. So that's a place to actually stress them.
Interesting concept. Thank you.
Steve Roberts?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would it be your contention, Dr. Myers, that all teachers should matriculate at a college of education?
That would be my contention.
We disagree on that. Thank you, sir.
I know we do.
Dina Horst?
Thank you. But my question is really for, I believe it's ELA, yeah, English Language Arts. So has to do with the use of data by the teacher, identifying students' individual differences, et cetera. Are we talking about what used to be in the CUM folder and they just are aware of that information?
Correct.
Or they're not sharing it with, with students or...
That is correct. We kind of refer to it now as a portfolio, but that's exactly the same concept. Yeah, just kind of knowing where those students are and addressing those needs of your individual students for teacher information only.
With the concerns that members of the community have about sharing data, I wanted to clarify that. And another component a little later, I believe it is, where you're talking about social justice. And are we talking about selecting literature for kids to read and then respond to? Or how would that be handled?
This, these would be the licensure standards that we are looking at to prepare our teacher candidates. So they would be teaching the curriculum materials that were selected in the district. So not so much that they are selecting the materials, but just being aware of themselves as, you know, a diverse learner, those diverse kids that will be in the class. Actually, that's also where the second language learners would come into, you know, dealing with those different students' needs in the classroom in respect to just diverse issues, being handicapped, being religious issues, being, just the, you know, the concept that we call a diverse learner. But ours, these standards that we are addressing today are standards that we are preparing our teacher candidates to be able to handle in a school district where that curriculum and those novels have been chosen by the district, yes.
So it's not suggesting to that teacher that they need to introduce that themselves without the district's...
Approval, correct.
Approval or whatever. Okay. Because I can foresee where we could find ourselves with some teachers, new teachers who get themselves into some experiences that they're unprepared for. So, thank you.
Jim Porter?
I second the motion.
Thank you for seconding the motion. We have a motion before us. It's moved by the Kansas State Board of Education to accept the attached recommendations for license, oh, excuse me, that's licensure. Where did I get the licensure? It's moved by the Kansas State Board of Education to approve the revised educator preparation program standards for English 5 through 8, English 6 through 12, Reading Specialist pre-K through 12, and Technology 6 through 12. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I had another comment before we vote.
Okay, we'll allow that.
Well, this is the time for discussion, am I not right?
No. Yes. I had called the question, but yes.
Well...
Go ahead.
I have serious concerns about Standard 6 without more knowledge of how it's going to be implemented. And I think it leads us into very turbulent waters. And in my view, these standards would be stronger without Standard 6. So for that reason, I'm going to be voting no on the question.
Thank you. Any other?
Clarification, six for which piece? I'm sorry, this is on page 33. The teachers of English Language Arts 5 through 8 use knowledge of theories and research about social justice, diversity, equity, and student inequity identities to enhance students' opportunities to learn in English Language Arts. They're...
It's through, well, all.
It's, it's all through, yeah. But I'm just focusing on that right now. That, I believe, is corrupts the standards to the point that I can't vote for them.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? We have a motion on the, on this to approve the, the standards as presented. So all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. One, two, three, four, five, six. Those opposed, same sign. One, two, three. I have a six, and is that an abstention? Dina, did you vote for it? Did I miss your hand? I'm sorry. I apologize. Let's do the vote for or against. Let's, I'm, Jim's too tall. We'll have to, we'll shorten him. Okay, let's do the vote again to make sure that we have it correct. All those in favor of the motion as presented, please signify by raising your hand. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven. Those opposed, same sign. One, two, three. Motion passes 7-3 with Mr. Willard. I'm going to get a cold. Excuse me?
Bacon and Roberts.
Oh, Bacon and Roberts, yes. And, and the cough. Voting in, in a negative. Thank you very much, and thank you to the committee for what you've done and the excellent work. Thank you for bringing it forward. I appreciate it. I'm sure we'll call on you again in the future. Thank you. At this time, we'll recess for lunch and return at 1:30 PM. Thank you very much. See you at 1:30.